All right, we'll call the meeting to order, the Planning Commission. Attendance, roll call.
Attendance noted.
All right. Our first item is approval of the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of June 27th, 2016. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And then this is an opportunity for citizens to address the commission items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who would like to address commission? Seeing none, we'll move forward. All right, public hearing. Item number one. Amend a planned unit development for Cedar Point Retail and Daycare. Staff.
Thank you. Final development plans for the Cedar Point Commons project were approved by the city council in June of 2006. The nearly 30-acre development included the existing Target, Home Depot, TCF Bank, the inline shops, as well as a future restaurant site at the southeast corner of the development, and space for additional retail on the vacant lots to the east of Richfield Parkway. I'm sorry, to the west of Richfield Parkway. For many years, market conditions were not strong enough to develop those sites. In December of 2015, Hempel Companies purchased the pad site, the vacant lots, and the existing inline retail from Ryan Companies. In February of this year, the developer attended a joint work session of the council, HRA, and Planning Commission to discuss preliminary thoughts on the redevelopment and get some feedback from you. The current proposal includes additional retail and restaurant space along 66th Street and a preliminary layout for a daycare on the northern half of the vacant lots. The developer is asking for final approvals of the retail and restaurant buildings and preliminary approval of the daycare facility. If approved by the council, final approval for that daycare building could be issued administratively through a minor amendment process. As you know, with planned unit developments, there are a number of conditions involved and requirements. Those are all detailed in the attached documentation for your staff report. I'm just gonna go over primarily the proposed changes and how they differ from the originally approved plans in 2006. And to do this, I'm gonna use, I'm gonna go through your site plans to help us go back and forth between the east property and the west. So maybe the camera can follow along on our overheads here. So the easternmost property was initially envisioned as a location for a full-service restaurant. That's right here, and to orient everybody, 77th Street is here on the right side of your page. And this building is the one that has Chipotle, Subway, Papa Murphy, some other smaller tenants. Almost immediately following the approvals, it became an issue to put a full-service restaurant at this location, both because for full-service restaurant size needs changed and also quick service, the quick-service food market was growing rapidly. The proposed building includes two quick-service restaurants and a small center tenant retail space. In the restaurants, you'll notice on this site plan, restaurants here on the easternmost side and west with the retail tenant here in the middle. The building incorporates many of the architectural elements of the existing inline shops, but significantly improves the southern facade. And I'm just gonna pull up a picture here of the, this is the 66th Street side of the existing shops. The new building will add windows, awnings, and an inviting pedestrian access point leading to either the pedestrian-focused central entrance to the Five Guys Restaurant or a southeastern patio attached to Cafe Zupas. So I will pull up some elevations for you here so you can compare. Okay, so here, you will note, this is the north side. This is what will face the parking lot. Here is the south exterior elevation. You'll notice there are more windows, there are awnings, and then I have some renderings to show you as well. This view in particular is the south, from the southeast. So you'll notice that this is significantly different from what is out there right now. On the, moving over to the western property. Let me go back here to the site plan. So originally, four multi-tenant buildings were proposed for this site. The developer is proposing one multi-tenant retail restaurant building here. Oops, wrong mouth. Here, down at the corner, this is Richfield Parkway, here's 66th Street. And the daycare facility is here on the northern half of the site. Again, this is a preliminary site plan for that daycare center. The multi, this multi-tenant building also includes two restaurants, one on either end of the building and a central retail space. Sorry. Trying to do too many things here. There we go. Again, the building mimics many of the architectural elements of the existing development, but improves that southern facade and focuses more on pedestrian access. Pedestrian and bicycle access being of particular importance for this site because it's adjacent to that new Three Rivers Park District Trail and a heavily-used transit stop on 66th Street. Functional doors will be provided along 66th Street for this building. The daycare facility at the north end of the property is proposed to serve up to 180 children. Although the site was initially approved to re, for retail uses, daycare is permitted use in this district, in the underlying district. And staff believes that a daycare use would actually provide a nice transition from some of the residential that will be built to the north and currently exists in the north and to the west. The, it will serve, this, this type of use could serve both the existing neighborhood and future if those apartments come online to the north. The architecture of the daycare facility is currently being developed. The approved planned unit development does require that future buildings be similar to Target and Home Depot. Staff is supporting the idea that this building could differ in architecture. We don't need a flat roof, but we should use similar materials. There should be some relationship between these buildings, this, the daycare building, to the others, but it does not need to match the existing buildings. Again, design that helps provide a transition from the retail and commercial development to the residential would be appropriate in this location. So I'll just go over the variations from our standard requirements. The first one is building orientation. The code requires that buildings be oriented such that one, at least one primary entrance faces the street. So sticking here with the property to the west, staff again feels that the requirement is most important for this building because of the transit stop and the trail. The developer is proposing three functional doors along 66th Street and Richfield Parkway, but we do feel that additional architectural elements should be added to highlight those, make sure that pedestrians know where those access points are. The attached resolution includes a stipulation requiring that the developer continue to work with staff on those design elements and that going forward, a minimum of two tenants maintain functional customer entrances on this side of the building. The daycare building to the north does not include a doorway facing a pedestrian or customer entrance facing the street. The security needs of a daycare are going to limit how many access points you can have to that type of building. However, you will notice, and, and we have a, an updated site plan for this location as well, where we can show you. The, the area along Richfield Parkway will be playground space over here. And also on this side too. But along here, it, there will be active uses along the street. It's not that that's going to be dead space against the trail. It, it will be active. The easternmost property, the location of this building, you might be able to see it. Wrong mouth again. Here. So tucked here in the corner, the location of this building does not necessarily lend itself to a lot of pedestrian traffic in this area. In addition, there is a slight grade change. You can see how Chipotle is set a bit down from the street here. So we, we have discussed with the developer creating a more inviting entrance into this pedestrian space that will be between the two buildings. Show you that on here. Right here, this space here. Five Guys will have an entrance in this interior pedestrian walkway. And so we've talked to them about adding something like a trellis structure, something similar to what's in front of TCF Bank, really calling, calling attention to the fact that that is an entryway to this development. You can get here this way, rather than focusing on getting, getting entrances on 66th Street that we don't think are going to be particularly helpful here. So then just one final comment before I introduce the developer here. In order to help facilitate construction this year, we are recommending that the Planning Commission and council approve a preliminary plan for the daycare. I'm going to, would you put this on the overhead? I'm gonna show you, this is the second iteration of the daycare plan. And, and what we're trying to do here is, is just make sure that we don't have to come back to another public meeting for minor changes. So you'll note on this new daycare plan that now the playground space is shown. There is a small parking lot on that plan, shown at the north end of the property, but largely, the building's in the same place, the parking is the same, access is the same. The major components of the development are not changing. What we're asking is for you to consider approving, giving preliminary approval tonight and then allowing staff and the developer to work out any kinks that we see moving forward. In, in particular, on this staff report, or I'm sorry, on this site plan, I can tell you right now that the trash enclosure is a separate structure and we'd need to work that out. That parking lot at the north end doesn't meet requirements, it's not set back, it uses the right-of-way. But these are, these are relatively minor things. The building itself, we don't have any problem with. We're comfortable knowing that we can work together on the architecture and the materials. We feel like the things that need to be changed here, the sign is not set back quite far enough. Those are pretty minor things that wouldn't necessarily need another public meeting, another month and a half of process to move forward. So that's why we're recommending that. So I just wanted to mention now that from Hempel Developments, we have Ben Criznak here, and we also have his architect here. So if there are any questions for them, you can go, you can direct those there, or I would be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Questions?
Yeah, the daycare site plan, so will there, there will be a parking lot on the north side? Is that, or it will just be altered from what's shown? Because that does seem different than what's in the packet that sort of suggested that was green space.
Yep, it did. And the parking is not necessary.
Okay.
And that's something that we need to discuss with the developer, with the daycare. Technically, the site itself as a whole, including retail and daycare, is eight spaces short from what our general requirement would be. That said, you know, daycare has certain peaks of use and the restaurant and retail are gonna have certain peaks. Quick-service restaurants are gonna peak between 11 and 2. That is the complete opposite of when a daycare is going to peak in terms of need. So at a staff level, we're completely comfortable with the parking that has been proposed as part of the packet that you're seeing now. And that's something that can be worked out.
And then one other thing, and you, you've given great attention to the pedestrian access and other places. Just on the site plan for the daycare, it shows a sidewalk that serves the parking lot that dead-ends just before it hits the trail. So I would hope that that gets worked out and that there's a connection made.
Yes, thank you. And one other thing that I noticed on the revised plans is that there is not a sidewalk that's connecting it into the neighborhood, and that is something that we would like to see there too, even though that also will dead-end since there's a residential property to the west. The hope is that someday that connection could be made as well.
Is there a fence around the playground between the playground and 17th? Or is that just open?
On the, on the proposal?
Yes.
Daycares are required to fence their playgrounds, yes. Not, not by me, but by the state. The state requires you to fence your daycare playgrounds.
How tall is that fence there? Is the requirement?
The, it would be allowed to be up to eight feet tall. We would recommend a six.
Okay. Are there questions of staff or the developer, if anybody?
I have some questions about the retail building, but if anybody else has comments on the daycare first, maybe? No? So, and I wonder, I do wanna ask the questions of the developers, so if you could, if you could possibly come up? Thank you. So I, the east building, I think you guys did a great job with. I think it's a huge improvement and I think very context-appropriate for what's there. I've got just a couple of concerns about the west building. It's great to see those pedestrian entrances, but I am wondering why it's set quite so far back from the sidewalk and there's a large, kinda not very useful, green buffer that's created. It's very inconsistent with the development that's proposed across the street. So is there a reason why that wasn't closer to the sidewalk?
Can you pull up the plan for the, for the west building? The reason is, in order to get, there's quite a curve in the, in the property line, so in order to get the width of the building that we needed within the setbacks, we had to move it as, as far to the north as we could.
All right, so this is one of the issues that I raised with staff before the meeting, is that the setback shown is like 30 feet. And I believe with functional pedestrian entrances, that could actually be like five feet. So I think the building, even though it's shown at the limit of the 30-foot setback, could be quite a bit closer if, if the five-foot setback were the limiting factor.
Just one second, Sean, while we try to get the site plan up. Thank you. Can we switch over to the camera for the desk caps here? There we go, thank you.
Okay. And then there's, there's also the, the outdoor dining area there.
Okay.
Basically, it's, the, the reason is because of the setback and the way that that curve.
All right, so I am also wondering if, assuming the building, the building stays where it is, I, I'd like that there are functional pedestrian entrances, and I really think that's a great improvement over the previous one, but the sidewalk layout that's shown doesn't have the access really aligned with the entrances. And it'd be nice if you were on the sidewalk at 66th, when you see a restaurant you wanna go to, you could go straight to it. Whereas the current design requires you to kind of exit to this private sidewalk first and do that sort of advanced planning. So would you be amenable to having sidewalks that directly align with the, the functional entrances that are provided?
And I think part of that will be, and, and even the, the location of the entrances themselves. We don't have plans yet for, for either of those restaurant tenants or, or even the center tenant. And we had, we'd sort of set up the exterior of the building so that the center could be two tenants, who's smaller tenants, thus there's space for two. If it becomes one, I'm told that might, we'd probably move that sort of combo mechanical room and, and trash enclosure, because then inside trash enclosure to one side, we'd have a broader storefront.
Yeah.
And a nicer entry, which is one of the conditions that Melissa mentioned earlier. We'd be totally fine with that.
Yeah, that would be great if that works out for you.
We're basically fine with all the conditions. We think they're all perfect.
Thank you. I don't have others.
During the joint work session, there was some talk about the church next door and a connection point, I believe they were requesting. Do you have any information about that? Was that, did you guys meet with them? I know we had asked you to meet and talk with them.
Yeah, no, we haven't met with them. Does that sidewalk connect?
Yes.
I think it does, right?
The sidewalk does connect. That was one of the comments from staff as well, and there is a connection.
Okay, so that is that up in the upper left there?
Yes.
Okay. Will there be a fence line there with an opening, or is it just?
There's an existing fence and a gate.
Okay. So that will stay as is. Okay. Thank you. Anybody have questions, staff? This is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing. If anybody else would like to speak about this, come on up. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries? Comments? Questions? Discussion? Anybody?
Well, I can make a motion and we can discuss the motion.
There you go.
So I would like to move the staff recommendation with the additional stipulation that there be front, front woks that go directly to any pedestrian entrances facing 66th on the west building.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Again, I think this is a great improvement. I'm really glad to see something that's harmonious with the existing development that fixes some of the flaws of those that earlier were.
I agree, I like the addition of the sidewalks. So that you're not walking across the grass and avoiding it, making that stand front. Anybody else? That motion then includes the daycare piece of it as well, that we are?
Yes, the existing motion does include the preliminary approval for the daycare.
Okay. Anybody have any comments on that? No? All right. There's a motion, is there, in a second, take a vote?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, number two. I'm gonna make this bigger. Item number two is consider amendments to the city zoning ordinance. The proposed ordinance allows the city to opt out of recently adopted legislation related to temporary family healthcare dwellings. Staff.
Thank you. Legislation allowing certain types of recreational vehicles to be used as temporary family dwellings was signed into law by the legislature in May of this year. The stated purpose of the law is to provide transitional housing for seniors, although the law does not limit the housing to seniors, but rather allows anyone in need of assistance to be hosted, to be housed in this manner. The law creates a new type of permit, a temporary conditional use permit. Most of you may remember that conditional use permits are not allowed to have time limits on them. Generally, we use interim use permits for that type of thing. This creates a temporary conditional use permit that allows this type of housing for up to six months, with an option to extend the permit by an additional six months. The law gives cities only 15 days to make a decision on granting the permit, as opposed to the typical 60 days that we have to make a decision on general land use applications. The League of Minnesota Cities and city staff oppose the legislation for a number of reasons. I'll just go through a few of those now that we submitted to the league when this legis, when this legislation was being considered. Cities should be allowed to make decisions related to density and accessory dwellings, dwelling units or structures at a local level. The varied characteristics of cities make it inappropriate to adopt one-size-fits-all land use regulations. The city of Richfield allows accessory dwelling units in a variety of forms, and individuals wishing to accommodate an aging senior have a legal, city-sanctioned way to do so. Adopted legislation allows for only one occupant in a temporary housing unit. This seems unsafe and inconsistent with an urgent need for temporary housing to place a person with medical or physical or mental impairments alone in a housing unit. Minnesota winter could further complicate that matter. The combination of an accessory dwelling unit plus a temporary family healthcare dwelling on a Richfield lot could create overcrowding issues and impact the surrounding neighborhood. The adopted permit process puts city staff in the place of having to request medical and legal documents. The city of Richfield does not want to be in this position. And the adopted timeline is far too short. As a result of strong city and league opposition, the adopted bill does allow cities to opt out of the legislation. Unless cities choose not to participate by passing an opt-out ordinance, the law requires cities to start issuing permits on September 1st. The league has drafted the attached model ordinance to assist cities in this process. It's the opinion of city staff and legal counsel that the council should adopt the attached ordinance opting out of the requirements. Staff believes that adequate provisions to allow both temporary and longer-term assistance for family members with health issues already exist in our ordinances. I'm going to conclude my report here. I have distributed the public, we got one written public comment memo, which I distributed to you before the meeting. So I'm going to give you a couple of minutes to read that. If you'll just raise your heads when you're done, we'll move on from there. Okay. I think everyone has had enough time. I just wanted to mention that it does seem that most communities are opting out of these provisions. You may have seen some of that in the news. But Burnsville, Crystal, Lakeville, Woodbury, Eden Prairie, and a number of other cities have also opted out. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Anyone questions? This is an open hearing, so if anyone would like to speak at the open, come up. See, no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Comments? Questions? Motions? Seems pretty straightforward. I'm kind of in agreement that we have enough to, ordinances already to cover this.
I just have a question, Madam Chair. What was the reason for this? I mean, because most municipalities do have, like you said, the provision to, to, to house seniors. Is this supposed to be like for non-family members or? Because I see all the relationships that are here, but...
Right, I, I actually believe that it's a company, it's a Minnesota company called Nextdoor. Nextdoor Housing, out of New Brighton, that was interested in providing this type of housing unit. And I believe that is the, the company that was pushing this. You know, I'm, perhaps they don't think that most communities have...
Oh, okay. Because in Richfield, we do have, I know of at least one, one housing unit that has several unrelated elderly women living in separate rooms, but I mean, they're all in one, under one roof of, down, close to 76th Street. And I can't remember the name of it, but I mean, so there are facilities in Richfield that does accommodate seniors.
Right, and state...
Now, these are unrelated, the ones, the one that I know of, but...
Right, state law also requires us to permit group homes, that type of group housing, care facility in our residential areas. So I do think that Richfield has a number of options. I, I think that's probably why a number of communities are opting out of this. They also feel that they have options.
Yeah. Okay.
But this particular solution would be something akin to placing a storage unit or a trucking pod on someone's property for someone to live in?
Correct, you could, I mean, or an RV. You could have someone living in an RV in your driveway.
It doesn't have to be in a house.
It's intensifying current property use. So if you had a parent or someone else who wasn't well, but you couldn't stay in that house, they could drop a pod on their driveway under this structure or pull up in an RV and you could live there for six months.
Is this what this company is proposing? I mean, is this the company that has these pods like this?
Yes, they do build these pods. That's what the, that's what this Nextdoor Housing is.
It's clearing up really fast for me now. Okay. Okay. Yeah, it just didn't make a whole lot of sense. And so now when you put it in that context with pods or temporary shelters-type things, which to me, it doesn't seem very safe for a senior to be in there by themselves, so, okay. Got it. Got it.
Is there a motion?
Well, there's, there's a comment first, and then I'll make a, or somebody, anybody can make a motion. My only comment is, and I, I think, I think staff has made a really good point. Well, there's, there's a comment first and then I'll make a, or somebody, anybody can make a motion. My only comment is, and I, I think, I think staff has made a really good point, a really good case here. My only comment is that I feel like we do have relatively lax regulations related to RVs anyway, in terms of, and you do see them stored in fairly prominent locations in the front yard and other things. If we have such aesthetic objections to that, that's a big part of the basis of why we don't want to allow these temporary healthcare dwellings. I think at some point, we should consider How we regulate the storage of RVs, whether they're occupied or not.
Do you want to open up that can of worms?
It just occurred to me that that, it seems slightly hypocritical to.
Been opened up a couple of times recently.
Me storing something and someone living something in some place is two totally different things. We're talking about the safety of the community.
Well, I, I disagree. I think in terms of the impact of the neighborhood, I think whether it's empty or whether somebody lives in it is pretty similar to me. But anyway, that's just a comment. It doesn't affect my opinion of this, but it just occurred to me in terms of, of reading this and reading some of the critiques of these temporary healthcare dwellings. So I'm happy to make a motion to, for the staff recommendation. I think it's a good idea.
And I'll second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three, consider amendments to the sitting, city's zoning ordinance. The proposed ordinance will modify antenna and telecommunications tower requirements.
Thank you. In September of last year, the city council adopted a one-year moratorium On the consideration of wireless telecommunications facilities and antennas in city, county, and state right of ways. The moratorium was in response to inquiries about new small cell technology. The city had been approached by a company named Mobility, who was looking to install six new utility poles for small cell packages within city right of way. City staff believes that it is important to provide wireless communication access to the public. City staff also believes that it's possible to do so with fair and balanced regulations related to sighting, screening, and operation of those facilities. The proposed ordinance updates a number of definitions and the purpose and intent of these regulations, the purpose and intent section. It also strikes language related to co-location in the public right of way. That language is proposed to be removed because the zoning ordinance is not intended to regulate the initial permitting and placement of structures in the public right of way. We have a section of the city code specifically identified for right of way management That includes the city's policies related to permitting, placement, and undergrounding. In regard to the previous inquiry by Mobility, the city attorney has found that this particular company does not meet the definition Of a telecommunications right of way user as defined by the state statute. And therefore does not have a right under law, franchise, or ordinance to use the public right of way. The city may consider applications for right of way facilities by Mobility, but no inherent rights exist. So just to summarize quickly, this is, this is primarily a housekeeping item on the zoning ordinance side. We're removing the clause that talks about co-location in the public right of way mainly because it's confusing. And it's contradictory to our other sections and also because this isn't the proper place to have those regulations. In terms of the definitions that are changing, we're really just updating those. That doesn't have anything to do with necessarily Mobility's application. It has to do with updating our definitions to meet state stat, to match state statute. What we're trying to do in considering Mobility's application or a similar application Would be to decide where it's appropriate to add these new technologies. And in general, the thought is that it is appropriate to add them to existing site, existing utility poles perhaps, Existing towers, existing buildings. But in general, our policy has not been to add additional poles to the right of way. We've been working to underground those facilities. So while this ordinance, this ordinance doesn't speak to that application. It cleans some stomach, some stuff up. But Mobility's application is what started all of this. And we don't think they're allowed to move forward as they're proposing now, but we might be able to work with them in another fashion. If you have any other questions, I can try to answer those as well.
Questions?
And this applies exclusively within the right of way?
Correct. This is addressing right of way only.
This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak. Seeing no one. Is there a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments, questions, motions? Thank you for clearing up the I read this like three times and was Lost, so thank you.
I move to approve the ordinance changes.
Second.
All in favor, or comments? No comments? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. No new business, no old business. Liaisons, Community Service Advisory Commission.
No meeting this month.
City council?
Yeah, I just, just want to bring up that the city council did follow the recommendation of the planning commission and approved the ban shell Location, the new location in a vote of four to one.
Did they approve it with the sound piece that we added to it? Okay, I wasn't certain when that was there.
That is there.
Perfect. HRA, no report. School board, not here. Transportation Commission.
The only update I have is the 70th Street bike lanes. The planning continues with that and they had an open house, but I haven't seen the comments yet. I was in attendance and there was a mix of some neighborhood parking concerns. And then other people who were, were supportive. I didn't see anything too dramatic, so hopefully that continues to move through.
Thank you. Chamber of Commerce? Perfect. Anything else? Any other?
Yeah, I do. I have an announcement. This Saturday is the Richfield Beautiful Garden Tour. Maps are on sale now at all liquor stores here at City Hall. At the community center and at Woodlake, and they're $5 each. We have 10 gorgeous gardens. And people are going to get a chance to vote for their people's choice. And they will be recognized at the August 23rd staff or council meeting. So we're kind of excited. We're having a good time with this too, sure. Perfect. So if you like gardens and you need some ideas, Plan your garden here at the Planning Commission. That's your spot.
City planners report?
I did just want to mention, we got a note from the Human Rights Commission. And they are thinking that it would be great to have a booth at Penfest representing the various commissions. They are looking for someone from the planning commission to volunteer. You can discuss this amongst yourselves. I, I think some of you are already involved in Penfest in some other ways.
Remind me of the date?
The, I'm going to say the 18th.
19?
19, it's a Sunday.
Sunday, 18th or 19th?
I apologize. I did not bring it, but I can send you the email if you're interested. If more than one person is interested, I'm sure you can take shifts. But they would like to put that together and I can get, I can put you in touch with the representative from the Human Rights Commission.
Perfect, thank you. All right, is there a motion to?
Wanted to say, did you want to give the reminder about the school thing tomorrow again?
Right, thank you. The Richfield Middle School presentations from their summer school students, they did a planning project About the southeast corner of Richfield. And their final presentations, they've selected The best of the crop will be tomorrow morning at 9:30 at Richfield Middle School Auditorium. And they would love for you to come and see their work if you're available.
So are we going to view their work? Are we involved in any way?
You will just be viewing and listening to the presentation.
Just like you sure. All right, is there a motion to close the meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.